Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Art Woodman, Vice Chair of the Shasbury Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order on Monday, June 3rd, 2019 at 6:30. First order of business is the Conflict of Interest Statement. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with any of the things shown on the schedule?
No.
No.
I think there are also, we want to make one, another change. We want to slide a consideration in the contract with the Sheriff's Department in after the roads reached there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Approval of minutes. We've got two, two sets of minutes that we can vote on. One is the May 6th. Who is here? Ken, Art, Joe, and Tony. So, everybody who's here that could vote on it. Any corrections, admissions, or additions to May 6th? Except the motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Kenny.
We'll give that one to Joe, okay?
Yeah.
First by second, second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Do I have, should I sign this one?
Yes.
Okay. 4-0-0, yep. And we've got May 20th. Okay. Ken, Art, Joe, and Tony. So, we're all set here. May 20th. Anybody have any comments on May 20th?
I'm good.
Is that a motion then, to accept it?
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, 4-0-0. Next is warrants. We have a payroll warrant. Payroll warrant, warrant number 24 for $20,775.73.
So moved.
Tony, second by Ken. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 4-0-0. Next, we have check warrant number 36. For total, where is the total on this?
So moved.
Tony and Joe?
Any discussion?
Yeah. Let me read. I'll read off the ones over $1,000. Pennington County Sheriff's for $1,500. There's a good one. Russell Construction for $70,383. Is that the last one?
One more. One more for $15,000.
The one?
Yeah.
Sycamore Landscaping for $2,000 for mowing of the cemeteries. Our property casualty insurance for $27,498. Did you have a comment?
Just a question. Now, with the landscaping, or the $2,000 for the mowing?
Yep.
Now, when they bid on that job, did we pay them right up front for the year, or?
No.
So, this is going to be a continuing thing? Okay. All right. That, I understand.
And that insurance is for the second half of the year. That's?
Yep, semi-annual. Yep, okay. William E. Daly for $6,255.62. And that's it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 4-0-0. Does anybody have any announcements? Anything coming up? Nothing, Dave, that you know of?
Nope.
This time, we're pleased to have David Durfee, our representative from Shasbury. Just got through rounding out the year up from that area.
Thank you, Mr.?
Yeah. Why don't you go up here and just tell us what things might impact us as Shasbury residents and as Vermont citizens?
Thank you for having me. And as you said, our session wrapped up last week. So, it went about a week longer than it was scheduled to, which is not unusual. I think about half the time, it runs a little bit long. It's the first half of the biennium, so we left some bills that are in progress and will be picked up again when we go back in January. I met with the school board and some of the administrators and shared a couple of things with them, which I'll mention here too, because they affect tax rates, obviously, as well. So, there's been a lot of talk about lead testing in schools, and there is a bill that now will require schools throughout the state to test for lead in the buildings. So, this is not, nothing to do with the water supply, to do with fixtures in the buildings. And the final agreement was that the state will pay for the testing and reimburse districts largely for any fixtures that need to be replaced. So, these would be taps, water fountains, primarily. And they did some preliminary testing a year ago in schools, and a sample of schools found about 20% had a problem level of lead. So, that remains to be seen what the impact will be here locally.
What was the particle per million?
Four was the level that was settled on. And that was a compromise between what the House and the Senate wanted. It makes it the lowest in the country, essentially. The lowest standard in the country. So, we all want lead to be out of the water, and we want children not to be exposed to lead. The discussion was, you know, how much is that going to cost, essentially, in order to get to that level? That's what was agreed on ultimately. The, just the other thing was the property tax, the statewide property tax rate, which is estimated early in December, and then provided to towns, and they have to try and work with that during the budgeting, and then doesn't usually get finalized until the very end. And, as was the case this year, and ended up being pretty close to what was estimated in December. And it's going to mean a penny increase in the statewide property tax. The local districts can adjust that and do adjust that. And I, off the top of my head, I can't remember where Mount Anthony and where the new union district have come in. But, it'll vary depending on which town you're in, obviously. I believe that Shasbury was going to be up a couple of pennies. But, that information is available from a more reliable source than me. But, I think that's where it ended up.
This is, this is the property tax for school?
Just talking about schools here, yes. Nothing to do with the work that you're doing here.
We still sit around here.
Yeah. And just as a reminder, the, and this, this actually does have a tie-in with legislation. There was, right up until, till we left, there was still a possibility that the mergers would be delayed. That did not happen. So, unless something happens through the courts, that merger is scheduled to go forward on July 1st. And there's a vote scheduled, as I think you all know, on June 11th.
11th.
Here at Cole Hall, to vote for the budget for this new district. Which means coming out one more time to vote on one article, and appreciate everybody for taking the effort to do that on June 11th, or beforehand.
That was one of the announcements with the names, huh?
Okay. Killed two birds with one stone there.
That's right.
Okay. Yep. We, just a couple of things. As far as, as the work that we did this year, there are a lot of discussion about workforce development. There are challenges, I would say, across the state, across every sector and industry, in finding staff, finding employees to fill openings. So, there's a certain amount of money directed at training programs to try and encourage people to gain new skills, to try and bring people into the workforce who haven't historically been part of the workforce, to try and market the state to people to come in. There was a broadband initiative that was passed, and I believe the governor has signed it, that will provide money, funding to towns who are interested in working with, with private providers in the form of both grants and loans. This is not a cure-all. It's not going to bring internet to every last house at the end of every road, which would be a costly, cost prohibitive endeavor. But, it is an opportunity for towns who want to try and expand their broadband, their internet access to do that.
Of course, you've known, we've done the survey.
Yes, yeah. So, I know, done the survey. Tim, I know, drove around the town, some of the back roads, with a set of cell phones. And, that's a model that other towns are now emulating. So, good work, Shasbury, I think, for doing that. And hopefully, that will be helpful to everybody here. A couple of other things of general interest. We raised the age to purchase tobacco, smoking age to 21. We put-
Been that way since the 90s.
18. It's been.
Really?
Yep.
21?
Yep. Yep.
Wow. I thought I've seen the 21 signs all over the place, but it's-
No, no. It's been 18. Vaping has become the new method of choice for-
Safer alternative, so they say.
Yeah. It's very addictive, and-
You have zero nicotine, it's not, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The, there are other risks associated, so we've-
The one thing they found with vaping, with these things, that they recently found out, is that it does heart damage. So, it's not so much that it does lung damage, which they have found in some sources, with some of those big bazookas that they, often they did huge clouds. I guess they do tricks with them and all kinds of stuff. It's quite a thing. But, when you're inhaling something like that, that gives you the popcorn lung you might have heard about. But, they have found just recently, the vaping, e-cigs, it does more heart damage than anything. So, it's really, it's not, it's not good either.
Yeah. So, and I think that, right, and there are concerns about what else might not we know about it. So, you can no longer, you will no longer be able to buy vaping products online, and they're going to be taxed at the same level that tobacco is taxed at. So, those are three different steps that were taken. There's a huge increase in middle school and high school vaping over the past year. So, that was a health concern.
So, when somebody's taxed for tobacco, if you're going to buy a battery for an e-sig, if they're going to charge, they're going to tax you tobacco tax on a battery. You can't smoke the battery. I'm sorry, it's not even tobacco. There's nothing tobacco about it. So, how can they charge you a tobacco tax on something that has nothing to do with tobacco? And all stores do it. So, it's theft of service? I don't know. Robbery? What are you calling it?
Well-
Are you scouting?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I'm not sure exactly.
I mean, they're not benefiting. None of the state gets it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just wondering how they can legally do that, to charge you?
How a retailer can?
Yeah. How can they charge you, charge you tobacco tax on something that's not even tobacco? That's like charging, that's like charging an alcohol tax on a Coca-Cola.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they've historically been able to do it. Going forward, they should be able to do it legally with this, with a new tax that applies to vaping products. Batteries, though, I'm not sure about.
If they do, go to the vape shop, buy a battery, they'll charge you tobacco tax on it.
Okay. Maybe you've got specific questions, though, too, that I can talk about?
Yeah. I'd like to know why Vermont, whenever we get money, you know, from a disaster or whatever, it seems to be, and maybe it's just me that sees it this way, but, I mean, I kind of do see it this way. It seems like all the money is spent more up north than it ever is down south. Am I wrong for saying that, or is that the perception?
That's history.
Is that a bad perception, wrong perception?
I think there's probably, I think there's certainly perception, and there's probably, probably some accuracy to it. I mean, I have to say, the population is centered-
Is denser, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Not just in Burlington and the suburbs there, but Addison County and Washington County, yeah. Yep. So, but, we've got, you know, I think we're, we've got senators who are from the South who are, you know, constantly on the lookout for those of us who live in this part of the state.
I just feel like we're forgotten sometimes, then.
Yeah, yeah. I suspect that there are times when we are, yeah.
Of course, in today's paper, it talked about the ban on, on paper bags.
Yes.
The straws and that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
If the governor signs it, do you expect somebody will take it to court or anything, or is that?
I don't think so. The Grocers Association was supportive, the Vermont Grocers Association.
It's just the bag, the baggers, the manufacturers of bags?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, and I think that the, there are five or six communities within the state who have already come up with their own individual bans and laws.
So, does this override them, or?
Yeah. And it will make a consistent-
Yes.
From town to town approach that the Vermont Grocers Association was okay with. And I will say, just working in Williams Town, which is a town in Massachusetts that's had this ban in effect, they, I think four years ago banned plastic bags, and people adjust.
It's, not to interrupt, but it seems funny that, you know, here we are as Americans. We're like the biggest recyclers on earth. We're very clean about it. Everybody does their part, it seems like, right? They do.
Yeah, the plastic bags are hard to recycle. The market is tough there, I think.
But, still, it can melt it down and re-dump. But, what I'm getting at is, you got the, the world's largest polluters are Vietnam, well, actually, China's the number one, but then you have Malaysia, Vietnam, countries like that, they just, they throw it out in the ocean. It's all over the place. And it's coming our way, as you've known. I mean, you see these guys with these teams that get together down in California and Florida, just , you know, cleaning up the ocean.
Yeah, yeah.
No matter what we do, it's not going to stop because of that. And that's the unfortunate truth of it.
Yeah. You know, I think it can often be said that, that, you know, no matter what Vermont does, it's not going to solve the larger world problems. But, we've also got-
So, do we have bigger fish or fries, I guess, what I'm getting at, besides plastic bags and straws?
Well, but I think we've also got, I mean, we have to consider, where does our trash go with, you know, only one landfill in the state, and the lake, Lake Champlain, which has its own plastic problems, so.
Champ just can't eat it up fast enough.
Yeah, yeah. We need another champ.
Well, thank you for answering that.
What was the idea of lowering that lead level? Why is Vermont always got to be the lowest of everything? We've got, we're the only state in the country that's got the lowest PFOA level. Now, you got the lowest lead level. I mean, if the other 49 states, it's all right, why do we have to be the outman out, so to speak?
Yeah. It's sort of the same, the same, yeah, remark about we can't, we can make our own decisions here, but it's not going to change the world. I, I think that the, the argument was, no level, no level of lead is, is a healthy level of lead. And the, the fix can be done in, in, in schools for a cost. And so, what are we willing to spend to ensure the health of our children? It's a difficult argument to, you know, to argue against.
Well, I'm not sure I've got as much of a problem with that, as I do with the PFOA stuff.
Uh-huh.
Because that's caused the toll of Shasbury quite a lot of money already.
Yeah.
As far as I can see, I haven't been able to find anything that's a real defined level that causes a problem with that stuff.
With PFOAs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how does that affect the property, the property values around here with PFOAs? Has there been any kind of talk about that, as far as property values being down? People trying to sell their houses they can't because of it?
I-
I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything either, Joe. But, it's, I mean, to me, it's not just PFOA, the lead, it's everything else. These geniuses get up there with pink colored glasses on, you know, they're going to save the whole damn world. And it costs us money.
Yeah.
And it costs the whole state money.
Well, the problem is, we're a poor state, and we can't fight these, you know, ideas when they come in. So, it's-
That, that level, is that only for school watering systems? In other words, are they going to apply that to somebody that just drilled a well or something like that?
No, no.
It's just for the school?
Well, it's schools and daycares, childcare.
Well, it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you're talking about younger, younger people as opposed to adults?
Yeah, yeah. If you, no, if you are drilling a well or in your own home, that's not affected at all.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, what about hospitals and things like that?
Hospitals are not impacted either. Yeah.
Why?
Well, the legislation wasn't crafted that way. And if that's something that you're interested in, we can certainly talk about it.
Okay.
Hadn't they done a study where they found that the lead pipes were present in the schools? They had already surveyed the pipes up into the schools, and then they began to survey the schools themselves and found-
I think, to the extent that they're older buildings, older plumbing.
Older, yeah. And that's where, that's where the initiative came in.
Yeah. So, it's maybe less likely to be-
Yeah, yeah.
An issue in, in hospitals, newer buildings.
That's where they, yeah. So, that's why.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Feel free to reach out anytime. I'll, I'll make an effort to stop by meetings over the summer, too.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to do the treasurer's report.
Okay. Hello.
Hey, Mel.
So, let's-
Cash flow?
Yeah, I sent them all to you. Yeah.
Boy, we got cash.
Don't scare me like that. Okay. I'll zip through this. There's not a lot new. If you go down to the bottom half, you can see that our cash position right now is over $200,000. Then, so, I am officially-
Are you comfortable?
I am officially no longer worried. Yeah. We're, I'm, I'm keeping on top of it because you just approved some checks that are great, big honking checks, but they're actually from the reserve account. So, I will transfer that money first thing tomorrow. So, you'll see money in and money out, and we'll probably end up not all that different from where we are. The insurance comes out of the general fund, right?
Yeah, the insurance is actually prepaid for next year, too.
Okay, but it's still cash?
Yeah, it's still cash for you, but-
Yeah. That's all I care about is cash this month.
There's a bond in the reserve, that's right.
So, that, that'll, I think that was, you said $23,000 or something. So, that'll affect us. That, that, it's going to bring us down under 200. There were some other checks in there that-
Yeah, there's only about $9,000 of that warrant that's actually coming out of the general fund. Most everything in there is being-
But, except the insurance, isn't the insurance?
Yeah, but that's prepaid for next year, so that's-
Yes, but it's still cash this month.
It's still cash, but it's not part of my budget.
You're talking budget, I'm talking cash. So, yeah, so, we're going to be fine. If you want to go down to the very bottom, you can see where we are versus budget and compare it to last year. I think that if you look at the expenditures for last year, at this point, we had only spent 92% of, of the budgeted expenditures. And this year, we're, we're, we've spent 97. And I think that is all of the cash flow issue, right? That number captures it. Those are tiny percentages, but it translates to, you know, a few tens of thousands. So, I think that we're just spending a little bit faster. We're still on budget to, to end exactly on budget. So, that's, but as I say, I'm not worried about it at all.
So, we're on target?
Completely on target. If we want to look at the reserve accounts, you can see a lot of money going back and forth. So, all that stuff in the credits and debits is the transfers that I was doing, just to make sure that the cash ends up going back to the general fund if we wrote checks on those funds, that, that was actually coming out of those funds. So, nothing else particularly going on here. You can see what, what Dave was talking about is, is the 280 line, the second of the two, is the garage. And you can see right now, we've got cash of $87,000, but that's going to go down by 70.
70.
That's right.
And then another 15. So, that's, that's the illustration of what Dave was talking about before.
And that's going, just to just let you run a quick minute, that's going down, and then about $8,000 is coming back in, because MSK owes us the $8,000 for the error.
Yeah. So, you'll probably see that in the next, next meeting. You'll see those, those numbers that we have said, we've predicted in this meeting, you'll see that they have actually happened in the next one. The other thing I wanted to, unless you have any questions about either of these, I wanted to show you one, one other thing real quick. Any questions about the cash flow, or? Okay. That's the one. Okay. I just, the, the treasurers are all talking about the changes to the tax bill, and somebody sent around this thing that the, the state put out to help people understand the new tax bill is going to be a little different this year. And I have copies of this that I will hand out on request, paper copies. It's, we also put it on the town website. So, there's a link to this, this explanatory spreadsheet. The interesting part is on the second page. Dave, if you want to go down a little bit. Okay. This is the, the thing that's different. I think it's going to be really hard to read for people. You see in the, the box right, right above where it says sample?
Yeah.
That's where the municipal and the, the local agreement numbers will be. And then the education is next to it. So, they used to be stacked, one on top of the other, but now they're side by side. So, yeah. So, here's the municipal portion is here, and then the education is here. And you add them together, and here's the total tax is here, here's the income sensitivity adjustment, and then here's the amount you actually pay. We're going to get so many questions about this. I, I find it, I think it was a solution looking for a problem, and I think it's created a problem. So, a couple of things that some treasurers are going to do, and I think it's a good idea. It's going to take an extra step. But, I am going to go with a highlight or un-highlight the net tax due, so people can, so their eyes drawn to it.
What you're saying is, it's going to look like that.
It's going to look like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and finding the one number of what you actually have to pay. I, I do this all day. I'm, it's not going to be hard for me. But, for people who get one of them, it's going to be hard for them. And the other thing I'm going to, I have done, Tim, we talked about this in another meeting. We really wanted to get the pay by credit card option shown on the bill. It's just not feasible, especially with this new layout. There's no place to put it. So, I have had a, a stamp created that is going to say, taxes must be postmarked by, and then the date, and then underneath it says, or pay online at shasburybt.gov. So, that's another step. And I have to stamp every one of these. But, that's going to be in full color, too. Your eyes are really going to be drawn to it. I think especially with the first year, those two things, it's going to take a few hours to, to do it, but I think it'll pay for itself in, in not having people call me to, to ask how to read the bill.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, anybody out there in TV land who wants a copy of this, just either call me and ask for one, or you can find it online at our, at our website. And I think that'll really answer a lot of questions. Anything about that? Two other things really quickly. I, the state has a new set of internal control, a report that has far more detailed internal control questions that Dave and I were looking at today. It goes, it goes on, how long is that thing? Three pages or four?
Three, four pages, yeah.
Yeah, it's really detailed. I'm going to do it for next, next meeting, because it's supposed to be done right around the end of the fiscal year. It doesn't bring up anything that we're not doing. It's just very, very detailed. So, we'll have that for the next meeting. Also, at the next meeting, I will have the, the paperwork for the tax anticipation loan, so that we can start drawing right on July 1st, as we've discussed in the past. Okay? Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I guess Mike actually came in and gave us a very detailed report last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Did, much, much, probably not much has changed. He was on vacation.
He was on vacation last week. We're getting a little break on the weather, so the priority really for June is- the priority really for June is, we know the grading is a bit behind, but rain will do that to you. So both graders are out, we're trying to catch up with all the grading that has had to be postponed. They're going to finish Cross Hill, the section leading down to White Creek, and the upper portion of that was Grantway, that's coming in July 1st. And we're just getting, charting the way to move into the garage, because it's not just moving in, there's a whole list of things that have to be done in sequence to make it work correctly, starting with diesel fuel, and ordering a bench, so that will be a gradual process.
It's not top priority.
It's not a top priority either, it's done, you know, we still haven't closed it out, but we can use the building, and, you know, it's just a lot of planning, but there are other priorities right now. As I said, the grading is behind, we all know that, so they're going to get that up to speed, and then we'll take on the projects, but all that's starting after July 1st. We'll have several grants, we already have a couple in place, and they'll do a couple of projects, but basically, our crew is going to spend the time doing the maintenance that's long and push law, ditching, basically ditching culverts and things like that.
Mr. Weaver, is he done with his obligations to us?
Yes, he finished his last contract last week, I think Mike had a chance to inspect it today.
Perfect.
And then we have, we'll be putting out the bids for the new stuff shortly. And, you know, we have, for most, all those grants, we have until next June to finish. You know, I like to look at these, instead of trying to cram everything in in the few good construction months, we always have next May and June to finish these off, you know, the same fiscal year, so.
Okay.
Sometimes it can be difficult to get the work getting done, all done before.
Got some little one there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, it's worthwhile, it worked out, we did five projects in May and June this year. So all grant projects, so it worked out pretty well.
Yeah, I think the secret is making our decision early, so they can go out to bid, and it would be a good job for somebody right off.
Yeah, and these are good projects, and for the guys who are in the roadwork business, these are good, quick projects for them. That also frees up our guys to do the maintenance that really needs to be done. And like I said, it was starting to turn the corner, it's going to take a while to get the roads up to speed, but we'll get there.
I noticed in the banner this morning, Bennington had a couple boxes of what they were going to do for the week, roads that were going to be closed, is that, do they pay for that, or is that a public service for the banner?
I don't know if the banner may do that for them, I don't know if they would do it for us. When we get into a project, not just routine maintenance, we will put it on the website, and we can start looking to post in the banner, I'm not sure-
I just didn't-
Yeah, I'm not sure how effective that is, but we can have it on the website. You know, most, some of our projects, like when we do the hollow, the hill and the hollow this year, that's going to be notification to the property owners, because that's going to be a difficult one for people to get around.
Well, of course, we also learned that everybody has, you know-
They don't have the internet access, and they need notification.
So, it was just a thought.
Yeah, you know, we need to get more information out. As soon as we continue to get more organized, we'll be able to put that stuff out. The only other thing is that the state is going to pave 7A this year.
Oh, they did have the money?
Yeah, so I was talking with the state, this isn't going to be a full job, this is just a driving course to flatten out the problems we have. And in a few more years, they will be redoing the road completely, if the federal money comes through as planned.
The whole stretch of Route 7A?
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, through the village and up to some point, I don't know where it stops going up the hill. They're trying to level it out, just so that it runs better, until they get the money for the full repair, because up the hill, past Airport Road, that's a very expensive fix, because the slopes soaks deeply down. Down here, it's all cement slabs under the road, so it's quite a project, actually. And we're going to be tearing the road up to put a water main in, so we're coordinating with the state so that we wreck the road, and then they can come in and pave it for good.
But they're going to leave the cement underneath, right?
No.
No, we have to break half the cement off to put in the water main. And then the slab starts sliding when you take half of it away, so I assume their goal is to remove the slab.
Okay.
Because it's just a problem at the time. I think that's probably it.
Any questions?
Yep.
Oh, okay, we're going to consider the contract for the sheriffs, we're going to slide that in?
Yes, I was speaking with the sheriff today, the contract, I'll have the written contract tomorrow, but the rate is going from $43.75 to $45, and we'll maintain the 17 hours a week that we have now. The $45 is covered in the budget that was approved by the voters. So I would look for a motion to approve the sheriff's contract for $45 per hour, for 17 hours per week for fiscal '20.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Tim signs the contract?
Yeah, Tim's name will be on it, so he can sign it when he comes back.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both, so carry, or is there a zero?
And then for Coal Hall and the garage, there really isn't much of an update, there's really no update for Coal Hall. We don't have any plans in front of the architects on what to do on the exterior, and that's all based on how quickly we move to the garage. Anyway, the garage is essentially done, we're waiting for manuals and operations procedures for different things in the garage. The budget looks like it's going to come out, 500 under, 500 over, it's about as close as we can possibly come.
Congratulations.
So it's all going to come down to the architect's last bill, so I hope he's listening out there. But yeah, it's come out pretty much right at 1.45, so, yeah, that's good. And as I said before, we'll move into that slowly, that can't be a priority, we have other things that need to be thought upon. And as we get in there, there's a number of things that need to be done in the sequence to make it work properly. But we'll have an open house, even if we're not completely moved in, I think people want to see it.
Yeah, it's important we get something.
Yeah, I think by the end of the month, we have to have some kind of open house, just so people can come in and see what went on. And we'll do that on a Saturday, because most people, you know, a lot of people are coming to the transfer station on a Saturday, and it'll be available to more people.
You can find a good caterer, pop champagne corks, it's a good time.
No alcohol on town, probably. We can have sparkling, what is it?
Sparkling water, great, great juice.
Is there internet up there? I was wondering about having a Sleutman's meeting up there.
Yes, there is internet up there, we have Comcast, Xfinity, so it's ready to go.
What do you think?
Sure.
But we have to get something in there, because we've had two statewide meetings in there already, very, very heavily. It would be very hard for this to function.
Okay, that's understandable.
Because, yeah, it's-
Put some equipment in there and sort out.
Well, that's the thing, yeah, yeah, it is kind of funny, they asked us before, we got into delays last year, we said, yeah, I'd love to show off the new building, and now it's completely empty, and people are talking, it's just like we've heard already.
Now, a lot of that interior surface was supposed to have been the sound deadening.
Yeah.
I hope they put it in there.
Yeah, it'll work, it's just when it's completely empty. We even tried opening the doors to try and take care of it, but it won't, we just need to get some things.
Well, it's a good idea, so.
It's a good idea.
Yes, that's right, we'll have a dance up there.
There.
Okay, looks like we're up to other business, anybody else got anything?
I think I did.
No. We didn't decide on any action items.
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, so-
That's it.
How about a motion to adjourn?
So move.
To adjourn.
Oh, second.
So move, all those in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Now it's time to say goodbye to all our company.